Good evening. The time is now five o'clock and we will begin our administrative portion of our council meeting. Please silence or turn off your cell phones if you have not already done so, so that you will not have any interruptions. And if you have not picked up a copy of the agenda, there should be someone at the back of the room. And sign in as well if you have not already signed in. We appreciate you doing so. The first part of business will be Martin Luther King Jr.'s day proclamation by our mayor, followed by citizens' recognition by the mayor also.
I'm gonna read it from here and then we'll come down and get our picture in. Proclamation, whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, challenging every individual to contribute to the ongoing work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King, while gaining national recognition for his philosophy of nonviolence, remains steadfast and uncompromising in his pursuit of equality and justice for all people regardless of race. And whereas Dr. King inspired us to recognize the sheer aspirations, hopes, and challenges that unite us, emphasizing the universal prayers of truth and dignity that bind us together as human beings. And whereas citizens of Ozark join with our nation in celebrating Dr. King's birthday as a national holiday and embracing the teachings of nonviolence and human rights, we reaffirm the significance of the enduring legacy. We honor his work for tolerance, peace, equality, making this day a time to unite in prayer and recommit ourselves to the American dream. We all people, irrespective of color, enjoy equal opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Martin Lake, City of Ozark, Alabama, do hereby claim January 20th, 2025, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And the City of Ozark can urge all citizens of Ozark to remember, celebrate, and act in appreciation and gratitude for the ideals of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. during this national birthday service. And y'all please don't leave after we do this one because we're gonna tell us who the other one we're gonna do after the end.
Some of us will have to go, Mayor. We gotta move.
You're not scared?
Uh-uh. We gotta find a way to move.
Do you all want to get through?
Yeah. Um, I'm not going to take you. You're coming in. Yeah.
Yeah. He had this question a little time ago. Yeah, perfect. Perfect. Okay. On the next item, we moved in Jones White and Aubrey South up here. And before I read these, I want to tell you a little bit about how this got started. When we had the general reception here, we had a Dale County 200 play at the same time. And they were only doing it one night, so people couldn't see the play. So I reached out to Ms. Marcy, the principal of Dale High School, and asked her, could they record it? And of course, Marcy's always willing to help, and they did, and did a great job. So when we moved the tank, I thought it'd be another great way to record that. I'm just gonna read this. They hope to read a lot. City of Ozark's certificate of appreciation presented to Joe the White and Aubrey South in recognition of your outstanding efforts in producing two remarkable videos at the request of the City of Ozark. Fixing some tale reflections and recollections of Dale County and coming home to Ozark to return the 31st Brigade, 131st M60A3 Combat Tank. Your dedication in preserving and sharing the rich history of Dale County not only honors the past, but also inspires pride and appreciation among the current and future generations. These exceptional words will serve as an enduring historic record safeguarding the histories, heritage, and contributions of our community. And we want to show y'all that video because I'm sure there's been one here that that has a chance to see it. So if y'all can get... We only have the one tank video.
The M60A3 Combat Tank commemorates the dedicated service of the Allenian National Guards 31st Brigade and 131st Armored Team of talent. The battalion played a crucial role in our defense and military readiness of our nation. Ozark, Alabama proudly hosted the National Guard from 1914 into 1958 on South Union Avenue after wish it moved to U.S. Highway 231 until its closure. These sites were instrumental in training and preparing our service members for their vital duties. This tank stands as the last tribute to the valor, dedication, and commitment of all those served here. In November of 2024, this M60A3 tank was returned home back to Ozark for its service.
(Music) We are Americans, wherever we stand, oh, I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that life to me. And I'm glad this day is up next to you, and you've been there still today. Cause there ain't no doubt, I love this man. God bless the USA.
We were ever loved.
All right. One more time. Congratulations. I got one more thing to request, until I make it on Fox News or see you in the memory of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The next part of business will be employee recognition by Deputy Chief Brian and Director Ward.
Oh, I'm gonna let Deputy Chief Mike Brian present this, but I just wanted to remind everybody just how hard that employees of the DPS part, which is fire, police, and EMS, they really work hard each and every day. And not only just working hard, that's what we pay them to do, but they go above and beyond. And that's why we're here to recognize one of ours today for going above and beyond.
That's it. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Ozark Police Department, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Investigator Zachary Burlett for his remarkable response to a critical situation that occurred on Highway 231 in Midland City, Alabama, on November 30th, 2024. While off duty, Investigator Burlett demonstrated extraordinary courage and compassion by swiftly coming to the aid of a motorist who had suffered severe injuries after her vehicle caught fire and quickly became and fully engulfed in flames. His prompt actions in providing immediate care and ensuring the motorist's dignity by offering her clothing after medics had removed hers for treatment were truly exceptional. These actions reflect not only his commitment to public service, but also his inherent kindness and empathy. Investigator Burlett's response during this incident exemplifies the values and standards we strive to uphold within our department. By taking the initiative to assist in such a critical and personal manner, he has set a high benchmark for dedication to service. Investigator Burlett, if you would join us up here, please.
Mayor.
He didn't tell any of us. It was posted on social media, it's the only way we ever knew about it.
The next part of business will be to review our agenda after the prior pledge of allegiance. We're gonna have the minutes from the regular council meeting here on December 3rd. So at this time, councilors, if there are any questions or concerns concerning the minutes from the regular council meetings here on December 3rd.
No.
So thank you. Next item will be to set the agenda. Are there any additions to be added to the agenda for the end?
I think that because we lack two of our council people, that we need to table item number 14. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number 12.
Okay. We have a request to table item number 12. Any questions or concerns concerning that? For the end. Okay. Thank you. Next will be to award a bid on Ozark Technology Center roof replacement by Brett.
Yeah, this roof's in bad shape for quite some time. It's been licking. We tried to repair it several times, and it's pretty old roof. I recommend we replace it with a TPO. It's a low figure.
Is that just over what part of that?
That's the whole building.
Oh, okay.
Even the break trim and everything.
And let me add one thing to that. We have Hudson Alpha folks in and out of Huntsville. They were at the building all the time. Pretty getting embarrassed when it leaks as much as it does.
Right. And we do wanna go with the low bid.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it. Any questions, councilors, on Brett here regarding this?
My fault.
All right. Thanks.
I think I'm on this.
Okay. Next item will be to set a public hearing for the resoning of 4651 South, U.S. Highway 231. That's also Brett.
Yeah. This property's right off 231, right below Parker Drive. It's like a pond down. You can't hardly see it from the road. He wants to put little tiny homes on it. He's gonna start out by three of them, then down the couple of years, there's more out there, but he's got to resolve the TH to do that.
Right.
You don't have a problem with that?
He's got a site plan and everything for it. Once, if we do approve it, he's got to put a planning permission for approval.
And it's that area with the lake?
Yes.
Now, I understand that is across the highway from that subdivision. Am I right?
No, this is right across kind of where that old lumber shop was.
Right.
It's kind of right behind the church.
Right. Understood. And across the highway on the opposite side is the subdivision.
Oh, that's down the road. Yeah. What's the name of that road?
Fairway.
Fairway.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Counselor, any other questions or concerns regarding that? Okay. Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item will be a resolution to accept the dedication of credit union wait. Brian?
All right. This has been a works. I guess they called us about, called me about three years ago, wanting to know if we would accept this road. And of course, you know my policy in Ozark, I do not like to accept any roads. I like to give away. But anyway, typically, and I thought back, talked to Chris about this, it's not unusual for us to accept and adopt roadways or accept maintenance on roadways. I mean, that happens every time a development's done, subdivision, those type of things. Those, in that process, we, not typically, it's our process to actually put that road inspected, which during the construction process has made our guidelines. Now, this road, we did inspect it during the process, and it did all within our guidelines of road construction, so that did take place. But we typically put a one-year warranty on our road. Since this road has been completed and serviced for nearly two years, I don't think that would be applicable for this roadway itself. And I think the main concern as far as the credit union is, I guess there's only one lot that's not developed. The other two parcels that are developed, they're having problems. At least that's what was explained to me as far as putting their addresses on Google. And so it being a private drive has given them issues as far as doing that. They're not been able to do that as far as getting, I guess, the RSDA building, USRDA, is the one that had the most problems. So that's one thing. Now, as far as the city accepting a commercial development like this, this would be unique. The only time that we have done it, that you were counseling me, was Daniel and Bunning Drive.
Right.
And so we did that, and I was here then too, but we did that because it was an incentive for that developer to continue to develop those lots, which, you know, we did get, I guess they did sell one more parcel. And again, that would be my incentive for us to do this as well, is for the fact that all in did develop a lot that I did not ever think that would ever be developed. In fact, I remember when the engineer contacted me probably five years ago and told me about the lot that they were considering. I thought it was crazy, but they did. And of course, now we've got car wash. I know for many cities, that's not a big deal, but for Ozark, we've been trying to get a car wash in this town for, I don't know, 10 years. So I would be a favor for us doing this, especially considering the amount of money they invested into our community was tremendous.
So, counsel, any questions or concerns regarding this, accepting the road?
I have a question. I thought we had talked about a stipulation for when that commercial lot was developed with the heavy trucks going on it.
The last lot, and that was, and I think there's been some discussion since that point, but the credit union is putting those stipulations into that contract as far as that last parcel.
Okay.
So that would be something that we would monitor during that, you know, process.
And it would be enforceable for us when it would be?
Correct. Which we do that now in developments that are currently existing. Yeah. So, you know.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to compare that those three businesses are beneficial to Ozark, and that was a huge investment, disowned all three of them, so I would be all in favor.
Well, they knew it was on the agenda tonight, and they were very excited about it.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Next item will be to approve establishing the Southern Star Museum. Mayor?
Okay. Y'all know we keep, we get, thanks to Representative Klaus, we continue to get state money every year. And one of the plans is to continue to build out the basement pieces at a time. So we did the one area with the bathrooms and that kind of thing, but we want to go inside the main area there, renovated, and took rooms over to the right. And we already have some stuff stored in there that is from the Southern Star. So I had talked with family, and they have more things that they're willing to donate. So then I went to Mr. Fear Little, who owns Stardust, went in the basement, and I took pictures of a bunch of equipment, told him what I was wanting to do, and I asked him whether he'd be willing to donate. And he responded back, and he said, I'll donate these three, which two of the three were things I really needed, I really wanted. What I'm gonna do is set it up to show the history of printing, going from the old metal line type printing to the offset printing to what we use today. And it's kind of three process. But since then, thanks to Michelle Mann, because she recommended it, I talked to Mr. Dodd, who owns the Addenville Herald in Addenville, because some of Joe's equipment got sold off over the years. So I've asked him, would he be willing to let us borrow it or, you know, whatever? He said, if I got something you want, if you'll come get it, you can have it. So he's looking to get all his inventory. There's also another building in town here that has some printing equipment in it, we think. So we're gonna be able to go through there. And it's, you know, a lot of it's not just equipment, it's the small items, the metal plates and types and stuff, material and that kind of thing. But I grew up in that background, so I know how to do that again. So it'll be really cool if we do it. But the Holman House Board is all about it, but we're not gonna spend any money out of our general fund. All this free help would come out of what is donated to it. And we will bring that back to y'all if you approve. We're just getting pricing right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor members, any questions or concerns?
Nope. I think it's a good thing.
Oh, yes.
It's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
And if those of you that don't know, the Adams family was a part of the Holman House. That house was a part of their family that died.
So Mayor, are the funds, do you see that as the Ozark Heritage Association funds that we're talking about?
Well, it's our funds, but Steve gives it to us, it comes to us. We just let them try to determine how much they're spending.
Okay. Thanks. Next item will be to set a public hearing for a residential incentive economic grant for Bob Harry. Okay, Mayor?
All right. This is three houses that's over at the intersection. It's kind of sitting in a triangle of Eufaula Street and Highway 27. And we, some of us have been here a long time, we know that is a Salima property because they all live there. So it has been on and off of our demo list since I've been here. They're in really bad shape, got lots of trees on it that need cutting up, shaping. But Mr. Harry has bought that property. He came to me asking what we could do incentive-wise, and I am proposing to y'all that, and Bob, I pulled this number out of the air, if he spent $300,000 on the project, $100,000 of fees and local money, if we would rebate 100% of the sales tax, noneducational sales tax, back to him if he bought it here in town. So you're looking at 10, 5 if he spends $300,000. And also ask, I'm asking to waive the building permit fees, which is not a lot of money. But we'll spend more than that in demo. So I just think it's a great program to really clean up that road.
Definitely. A big favor.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor members, any questions or concerns regarding this residential incentive?
Lady Ball.
And for those who don't know, the minimum investment, I think, on this residential incentive, which was created about four years or more ago, is $75,000, if I make no mistake. And he's well above that $75,000.
And that's, and that's really set up for new construction, but there's nothing to say we can't do a kind of like.
So this is great for the city, as opposed to demo. Okay. Thanks, Mayor. Next item on the agenda will be to approve a beverage agreement with Coca-Cola. Izzy?
So the City of Ozark already has a beverage agreement with Coca-Cola, so in terms of the agreement, nothing will change. We just reworked some of the terms, asking for a few scoreboards for our sports facilities, and to have the final cover at the pickleball facility we're done. They sat with us, negotiated, and they will be able to provide us the items that we want, and it's not gonna cost the city anything. The only thing what they want from us is us using them for at least 10 years without switching to Pepsi or a different product.
All right. Thanks. The council members, any questions or concerns regarding this beverage agreement for Coca-Cola?
Yes.
Okay. It's a great idea. They get the name recognition, but it doesn't cost the city anything.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. Next item, any requests for painting of the civic center? So Izzy, you have to tell me.
So yes, we are trying to get the civic center repainted. It's the third time that I get quotes for that job. Every time we get quotes, the prices go up naturally because, you know, it's inflation. I know it's very early in the fiscal year for me to be spending that much money out of my budget, so I'd like to ask for the council's approval or not to do this job. I think having a civic center with great looks is, has a nice floor, is now beneficial to the city. You know, people drive by and see that building that's dilapidated from the outside, it's not very appealing for people who are looking for events. So I think we should invest the money and get the building painted, but I do understand the concern of if we spend as much money now and something happens between now and the end of the fiscal year, I'm gonna have to come here and ask for more money. So I'd like for you, for the council, to please help me make that decision.
This is just a white tree, correct?
Yes. It's just concrete, not up to the bricks.
Counsel, any concerns regarding?
I agree. I think it needs to be done.
Already mentioned it two different times. We did all that work on the inside.
Exactly. Now the outside, but the outside does not reflect the quality of the inside.
Right. And I have passed by there on occasion and noticed that it is badly painted outside.
You recommend going with the commercial coating?
Yes. Those are the three quotes that we got, and the one that's the most appealing to us is from them. They seem to have the better service for the, you know, the most kind of uprising.
All right. I think we all in agreement.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be payment item number 12. So we'll move to 13 to approve use agreement between the Dale County Council of Arts and Humanities and the City of Ozark, Liam.
Yes. So as the mayor mentioned a few weeks, meetings ago, I did apply for a grant, and now I'm a arts council, from wearing my hat of the Historic Preservation Commission to get some money to work on the Dowling Building, which is the Anne Red Art Center and Dowling Museum is housed in. The, they, in order, in completing the paperwork for that grant, I did submit the deed for the property that Chris was able to find for us, but we could not find any kind of written agreement that allowed the, where the city allows Dale County Council of Arts and Humanities to occupy that building and to use it. So we need a written agreement. Chris couldn't find one, so I'm taking it was probably something verbal that was done 25 years ago when they first, this transaction was, so Mr. Peter Brugge, Brugge is in the audience, and he developed, he worked with his committee, and they developed a use agreement. Our attorney, Joe, looked at it and said that it was okay, so now we need the council.
Two, two things. One, insurance requirement.
Oh, yeah.
And then we stated it, made it state that it was for a public purpose.
Yes. And it does, those changes were made? So did y'all hear that? Did you hear that?
The changes were made, correct?
The changes are made in here. It's a law use agreement.
Yes. I read it all.
Yeah.
What was provided in y'all's packet was the?
Was they had the, that's what I was gonna say. Okay. So, yes, with those two adjustments to their agreement.
I bet there is an agreement somewhere.
Yeah. I don't know. We couldn't find it.
The most urgent thing now is when we deal with a nonprofit, we have, you as a council have to declare that it is for a public purpose. And that's it.
Okay. And it is. Yes. And the art museum, the Fine Arts Museum, I think, does fulfill that obligation for a public purpose.
And I will say this, that when you gave it to me, it was long and detailed, and when you told me that Peter Brugge had ripped it, I just said, okay.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Brugge is here. If council has any questions for him.
Okay. What do you think?
We would just like to commend Councilwoman Harlow, Mr. Peter Brugge, for you all's dedication in this matter.
Well, I have to say, it's the work of this community for 25 years. Next year, we'll be celebrating 25 years of the existence of that council in that Dowling Building. And the building is critical to the And the building is critical to the city. It's an anchor on the square. And Leah was our president for one year and she did a good job holding us, our feet to the fire. I'm one of the 12 council members or board members. I'm the only, I'm not an artist on it. But it's, it's a good group. It's all part-time and it relies a lot upon donations. And we're trying to find a way to do some better fundraising for next year, maybe padding ourselves on the Holman Committee. So we'll be touching you all for money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item would be to approve a request to rescind Marvin's Economic Development Grant Extension, Chris.
Okay. So a few city council meetings ago, brought up as a extension of the Economic Development Grant. Marvin said expires. City Council voted to go ahead and continue with that extension. I have not been paying that at the request of the mayor. He's had conversations with them and we're not going to have to. Because it was presented and voted on, I would like for that to be rescinded so that we just make it official, so that it don't come back on me. Why didn't you do that later? And so just, just to cover me.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, any questions or concerns regarding rescinding this Economic Development or an extension? Okay, thank you. Okay, in your court package, you have the municipal court report and a financial report. With that being said, we will now entertain any comments from any department here concerning agenda items. Are there any comments from any department here concerning any of the agenda items? There being none? Are there any comments from the floor concerning any of the agenda items that we just went over? Any comments from the floor? There being none? Are there any comments, questions or concerns concerning any subjects not on the agenda? From any?
I have one.
In the audience? Please come up, state your name, and we will allow you three minutes to give your concern.
Jerry Dukes. I'm concerned about the basketball court of Avery. When is it gonna be finished? The painting of the area?
No, sir. Good, are you? So we have, we have been shopping around for pricing for, to have done professionally. We got one quote from Ben Darley, which is the only regional business who would do it. The quote came a little over $8,000. We think that's a little too steep for us to be able to afford. So we're gonna buy stencils and do it ourselves. We have been working at the civic center, trying to finish a portion of the building. And I have some work to do at the Holman House. But after that, we're gonna go back to the open up board to finish that. It's, it's in the works. My pleasure.
Thank you, Jerry Dukes. Are there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on any concern they might have, not on the agenda? Yes, Ozzy?
I would like to invite everybody to attend our grand opening of the East Gate Gym on January 6th at 4:30. We are putting out the final touches there. Chris needs to approve a P O, which finished the four, but after that it should be done. So please mark your calendars, January 6th, 4:30, East Gate Gym. We just wanna show everybody what we have been working on. And we're very proud to be able to offer that to our sports facility. So please, if you could, it would be awesome having you there. Thank you.
I wanna say thank you, Ozzy, for that. There had been a lot of interest in that.
Yes.
The whole thing. That's a great thing.
It, it's taken us almost a couple of years to bring it to where we think it should be. But we have invested a lot of money, a lot of work, a lot of effort there, and it looks really good. So the kids are very lucky to be able to use that facility.
We haven't gotten to the point where we can establish a timeframe that they'll be allowed to use it yet.
We're gonna start using that soon.
You're talking about for free play or?
Right.
Yeah, not, uh, yeah.
Just utilizing the facility.
Yes. We're gonna use the facility for our basketball season. But I don't think we plan on opening that facility for open play just because we need to have somebody supervising it.
Right.
We don't wanna, we don't want any vandalism happening to it like you have on other, other facilities. So I have to be a little protective of it.
Right, I see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else with any item not on the agenda that would wish to speak to the council? If not, then I entertain comments from the mayor.
Just wanted to give y'all an update that our tennis court bids are out. So hopefully we'll get them back in soon. Ryan is actually, his crew is working on the, some of the lighting that was not a part of the bid. The M60 tank and helicopter on 231, I already have one price on it. I have another one on its way. And that's to take the helicopter down off the rack, paint both of them in place, and then, of course, put it back up. Yesterday, Attorney Adams and Holly and myself met again with Bill Helicopter on the phone. Seems to be progressing as if we're gonna wind up landing two companies out of that. So we feel pretty good about that. Bad news, the Taylor property over at the, next to the, where we're going to do the baseball complex. We got, kinda got locked in, they have $470,000 for those two houses. We did a market analysis and what that is, is what a realtor does to determine what to tell them to put it up for sale for. Well, it's quite a bit less than that. And I don't even think the appraisal would have been that high because they're in really bad shape. So I just don't know. I mean, I know we can't give more than appraisal value for something, you know? But anyway, we'll see if anything develops further. The 231 camera system, Director Ward and I talked about that in staff meeting again. We're getting close enough to the legislative session. We're gonna start having those conversations again and getting that passed. So we're not interested in speeding. We just wanna stop them from running red lights. So hopefully we can do that. Last night, I thought the Christmas parade went great, especially having to move it. And I have to tell you a little funny story. Chief of Staff, ex-chief of staff Tucker's daughter was there from Auburn. And she's got friends all over the United States. She was sending them pictures of our parade downtown. And then she was showing them her phone and they were responding back and asking, are you in a Hallmark movie? Or are you in Blue Bay, Blue Bay? So I thought it was pretty cool. But we have put together an agreement with Ricky Times. I delivered it to Brett Holmes early yesterday morning. Sit down and talk to him about revising that. We fell short on some of the job number requirements. So we made some offers there. We told him nothing's set in stone to have his attorney to look over and get back with us and see if we can come up with some agreements. So hopefully we'll get that done. The civic center sound system. Y'all know during the, our event we had Thursday, two weeks ago, you could not hear on stage. Well, I called J C, told him that they agreed in that deal with Southern Company that monitors would be provided. He remembered that conversation?
They're there today.
They're, they're today, right?
Yes.
So actually, he delivered them. So that's a really good thing. We had the Boys and Girls Club Team Center ribbon cutting today. Huge event, probably one of the best things we've done in years in City of Ozark. So we're pretty excited about that. The Ozark 12U baseball team won the Avenueville Baseball Tournament this last weekend. And getting back to Ozzy's comment, they called me and bragged on the East Gate facility and how nice it was. Said it was the nicest place they had played. So thought that was pretty good. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, end favor.
I just wanted to thank all of the department heads for the work they did on the parade last night. Thought it went real well, real well. And saved, had enough policemen out there, I think, to control anything. And just people everywhere. And I just wanna thank all of them for that, cleaning up and putting out barriers and everything. Don't realize how much work goes in that ahead of time if you don't go out there and look. But they do a lot of hours' work on that right there. So I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Comes in, be safe and take care.
Counsel, hard on you.
Yes, I'd like to, you know, did a, Councilman Ed Fingers said the parade was really nice. Although I did miss our Department of Public Works parade entry this year. Maybe they will do what they need to do to get the entry for next year. But it was, it was nice. I appreciate it very much. And I think God's for the weather too, because he provided the exit.
I did want to say one thing. No one else may have had a good time, but the soldiers lost and four of them sat behind us. They had a large time. They were hollering and clapping and wanting candy thrown to them and everything. They said it was the best parade they go to. And they really enjoyed it.
Okay, and then my last thing is, it's not told that you worry about it. I wanted to go ahead and throw it out there, is the chili cookoff. So the fourth annual Ozark, fourth annual chili cookoff. I got the reins this year, wearing my hat of small business owner downtown on the square. So we're starting early in advertising and publicity and getting it on. Get your team together and cook a pot of chili and let's see who has the best chili in Ozark. That's all.
Thanks. I also want to commend all of our city departments on a great job you've done for 2024, before the year ends. Everyone has been very supportive. You look at all the nice Christmas decorations downtown. We get great compliments on it as well. But not only in Public Works, but Poli, Spire, EMS, these services. You know, we're all just grateful for the job that you do every day. That being said?
I do have one thing that I just, I'm sorry. I missed my opportunity earlier when the department heads were brought up. I just, just FYI, just for information purposes, that $118,000 for the roof is a non-budgeted item. Just keep that in mind. As we move forward, that's, you know, it was not budgeted, so it's $118,000.
We want all our citizens to continue to shop Ozark first.
Yes.
And you don't have to do that in the brick and mortar building. Even if you order online, those taxes will also come to the City of Ozark. So that may be our way to the $118,000.
You don't have to go to Academy or Dick's.
Thank you. So we are recessing now for three minutes and then we'll begin our actual council meeting. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will begin our regular council meeting. We'll have the prayers from Councilman Ed Fingers, and a pledge of allegiance from Councilwoman Harlow.
Bye, Heath, please. Dear Herrn Father, we just thank you so much for your mercy, grace, and your love, Lord, and just for life itself, Lord. How precious it is, Lord. Lord, we thank you for this past year, Lord, that you have moved our city forward and the blessings you've shown upon it, Lord. And we just ask for your continued blessings, Lord. Ask you to be with each person in here, as well, and their families. Lord, just be with them. They will have a safe and happy Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, Lord. Just be with them, keep all their family members safe in Christ Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Attention, Salim, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel. Ed Fingers, Counsel, and Father. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on December 3rd, 2024. What are the wishes of the council?
President, I move that we set, set the minutes from the regular council meeting held December 3rd, 2024. Moves are approved.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item would be to set the agenda. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we set the agenda, tabling item number 12.
It has been moved that we set the agenda, tabling item 12. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next would be to award a bid on Ozark Technology Center roof replacement. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we award a bid on the Ozark Technology Center roof replacement on the amount of $118,000. Moves approved.
It's been moved that we award the bid for replacing $118,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item will be to set a public hearing for rezoning of 4651 South US Highway 231. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we set a public hearing for rezoning of 4651 South US Highway 231. For January the 7th, 2025.
It's been moved that we set a public hearing for the rezoning of this property. Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven would be a resolution to accept the dedication of Credit Union Way. What are the wishes of the council?
I move to introduce a resolution to accept the dedication of Credit Union Way. Moves approved.
Been moved?
Second.
That we accept the dedication of Credit Union Way? Is that a second?
Second, yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next would be approve establishing the Southern Star Museum. What are the wishes of the council?
I move that we approve establishing the Southern Star Museum in the basement of the Holman House.
Been moved, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and properly second that we establish the Southern Star Museum in the basement of the Holman House. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next would be to set a public hearing for residential incentive economic grant for Bob Harry. What are the wishes of the council?
I move to set a public hearing for residential incentive economic grant for Bob Harry. Moves approved.
Do I have a second?
So we set the date for January 7th?
Yes.
So the date, January 7th? A second.
Okay. Been moved and properly second that we set a public hearing for residential incentive economic grant for Bob Harry on January the 7th.
7th.
7th. Any discussions?
No, sir.
All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next would be to approve a beverage agreement with Coca-Cola for the civic center. What are the wishes of the council?
Um, Mr. President, I approve, or I move that we approve the beverage agreement with Coca-Cola for the City of Ozark. Ozark Parks and Recreation?
Right, Civic Center.
Civic, well, I think it's all. Okay, so I move to approve the beverage agreement for, with Coca-Cola for the City of Ozark's Department of Ozark, Department, right, yeah. Ozark Parks and Recreation. No, he changed it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we approve the beverage agreement with Coca-Cola for Ozark Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by a sign, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next would be to approve a request for a painting of the civic center. What are the wishes of the council?
I move for a request for painting the civic center. Moves approved.
Been moved that you approve the request for the painting of the civic center, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of that, be known by sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next item would be to approve use agreement between the Dale County Council of Arts and Humanities and the City of Ozark, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the use agreement between the Dale County Council of Arts and Humanities and the City of Ozark.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and proper second that we approve the use agreement between the Dale County Council of Arts and Humanities for the City of Ozark, all in favor of that, be known by sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next would be to approve a request to rescind Marvin's Economic Development Grant Extension, what are the wishes of the council?
President moved that we approve a request to rescind Marvin's Economic Development Grant Extension, a move for its approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and proper second that we approve the, to rescind Marvin's Economic Development Grant Extension, all in favor of that, be known by sign aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. You have in your package the municipal court report and your financial report, uh, any final comments from either council member? I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and I must also add that I did leave out the administrative department, but I want to commend them for a job well done in two thousand and twenty-four, only because we're a part of the administrative department, we left ourselves out, okay? Thank you all for coming, any comments from the floor before we adjourn? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion will adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of that, be known by sign aye?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Everyone have a nice night and Merry Christmas.